Special meeting on the fourteenth of March. You've seen the agenda, it's a very focused agenda, so we'll go straight into agenda item number one, which is apologies.
We've received apologies from councillor Pete Scott.
Are there any other apologies, please?
Chair, if I could just say, I've just had a phone call from councillor John Butterfield. She's having trouble getting on on her iPad and she's in discussion at the moment with ICT to get herself on.
Okay, thanks very much. Thanks very much for that, Barry.
It is. Duny mosti o man e bethia an mair can harridh.
Not sure whether he's here yet. Councillor Hughes Thomas gives his apologies. He might be late joining the meeting.
That. Okay, we'll go straight on to agenda item two, which is declaration of interest. So I'll ask Gary to read out the declarations and so on, please, if you could do that, Gary, please.
Thank you, Chair. Members will be aware of the requirements under the council's code of conduct to declare any personal or prejudicial interest in respect of any business to be considered at today's meeting. Such interests should be declared now or as soon as the councillor affected becomes aware that they have a personal or prejudicial interest in today's business. All members declaring an interest are required to state clearly what the interest is and to advise whether it's a personal interest or a personal and prejudicial interest as defined in the code of conduct. Any member declaring a prejudicial interest is required to leave the chamber for the duration of the business and can take no part in the proceedings. Members with a personal interest only may take part in the debate and any vote. If a personal or personal and prejudicial interest is declared today that has not previously been disclosed and recorded, the councillor concerned will be required to complete and sign a declaration of interest form, which is available online.
Okay, thank you for that, Gary. Yeah, because Gary obviously has an interest in the next item, he's going to leave the meeting, so I assume that there's no other councillors.
Can I ask a question, please, Chair, of Gary before he leaves?
Sorry?
Could I ask a question of Gary before he leaves?
A great escape. Sorry, Gary, didn't quite get to the door.
I sit on the remuneration panel. Just some guidance on that, please, Gary.
The remuneration panel is an internal body of the council, so there's no interest that requires to be declared in respect of that.
Mr. Chair, could I also ask, as I'm employed by North Wales Police, I'll declare a personal interest, please.
Is that for the Police and Crime Commissioner?
Yeah, that'll be for later on, obviously.
That's a separate meeting, actually. Technically, there's a council meeting and then a council briefing, so that's a separate meeting.
Is there, but it doesn't say whether there's declarations of interest in that at that time.
No, but with the agenda. You can note that declaration, Gary, that's fine.
Okay, thanks.
What we are planning to do, very far between this meeting and the next meeting, we'll have a short break. So it will definitely define the distance between this first meeting and the second one, so. Be good, but it has been noted, so thanks very much. Everybody happy for Gary to go now? Okay, thanks. Thanks very much, councillors. Okay, we'll go straight on to agenda item number three, which is a review of senior leadership structure. So I'll invite our chief executive, Graham Bowes, to introduce, please. Thank you.
Dear Chair, thank you. Prandar Paub, just confirm, so that it's already been said, all the senior officers will not be part of this meeting, so senior officers have left because they may have an interest in the discussion and the debate. So what's in front of you today is a detailed report, including six appendices, so hopefully you've had time to to read the report and those appendices. And in brief, there's two recommendations. The first recommendation is from me as the chief executive, seeking authority to create an additional corporate director post within the senior management structure of the council. And the second recommendation you'll see in the report is from the remuneration panel, which is seeking to authorize the grade of that new corporate director post, which is actually the same grade as the existing two corporate directors. No doubt there'll be a lot of questions, so I won't keep you too long, but I thought I'd give you a bit of background, justification as to my reasoning for the recommendation. The first thing to say is that clearly there are many challenges ahead for the council, not least financial challenges in the coming years, although we've had a good settlement for next year, we know that money will be tight in future years. There's plenty of challenges ahead for us. Things like regional and partnership working put additional pressures on the council in terms of the way we make sure we position ourselves to benefit from that work at regional and partnership level. We've got an aging population which will continue to put pressure on social services and we know a lot about our ability to attract new and retain our existing care staff, et cetera. So I'm not going to list all the kind of challenges that are ahead, but suffice to say, there are lots of challenges ahead for the council. And those challenges need to be addressed whilst we are still actually providing quality day-to-day frontline services. And that's the thing that really interests our communities, that we continue to support our frontline staff to provide the best services that we can at the frontline and actually deliver on our aspirations in what is our new corporate plan that is being formulated. So there's the kind of day job as well as dealing with the challenges that are ahead. And I have concluded that actually the council's senior management team is not best placed to respond to those challenges over the coming years. That senior leadership team hasn't been reviewed for some time. As changes have happened over time, there's been some individual kind of bolt-ons, and I'm not sure we've got the right management structure that's fit for purpose as we go forward to face those new challenges. So there's something about the structure and there's something about the capacity, and that's what I'm proposing. And I'm proposing to deal with that in a two-phased approach. The first phase is with us today, which is the creation of the new corporate director position. And then beyond that is the second phase to look at the service areas below that. And if approved today in terms of the new corporate director post, then of course we can move forward with those two phases as quickly as possible. It doesn't mean to say that we won't be able to start to move forward on some of those second phase issues, but I need the authority before I can move forward on the new structure in terms of creating this new corporate director. Now, you will no doubt ask the very reasonable question of why now at the eleventh hour of this council? I've only been chief executive for six months, so it's taken me time to make that assessment at that level. And actually, we're carrying three vacancies. So when I talk about the senior leadership team, there are 13 posts, and you'll see that in the report, there are currently three vacancies. And that means we're carrying some risk around not having the senior management, senior capacity and senior leadership in place. And it's this council that is the experienced council. You know the council, you know the workings of the council. It's this council that's actually appointed me as chief executive, so I think it's reasonable therefore for me to ask this council for this new corporate director post. And I don't think it would have been appropriate to ask the new council to make that decision because they would reasonably have turned around and said, you know, well, why didn't you put this forward to the former council, which has got experienced councillors that have been in place for a number of years? I think it's appropriate to bring forward now. The timing isn't ideal, but that's why we are where we are with the timing. So I was left with choices around just keeping those vacancies empty while we've got a new council and that council settled down. I didn't think that was the right approach. We could have replaced like-for-like on those vacancies, but for the reasons I've explained, I don't think the existing structure will serve us well going forward, so why would I want to replace like-for-like? So that does lead to the conclusion that the only logical way forward is the restructure, and the only logical way to make that decision is now. This investment, the new corporate director, will allow greater focus on corporate direction, will allow us the capacity to move forward with corporate initiatives, of which there are many, and the cross-cutting work, again, of which there are many. And I would ask you to view this as an investor-say proposal. The new corporate director, the new structure, will make us more effective in terms of our decision-making. Will give us an extra capacity and will actually bring forward efficiencies in the way that we do things and will more than pay for itself in terms of that strategic direction and support that I need as chief executive. So on that note, I will leave it there, Chair. Thank you. And I hope members can support me in this proposal, which I firmly believe will help us to deliver better services for our communities. Thank you, Chair. Oh, and of course, what I should say is I'm going to act as a joint report, so that's my bit done. In terms of the second recommendation, I'm going to hand over to councillor Julian Thompson-Hill, who is chair of the remuneration panel. So councillor Julian Thompson-Hill, please, thank you.
Thank you very much, Graham. Thanks, members. So if we work on the assumption at the moment that Graham's proposals are acceptable, as that would necessitate an increase in the overall wage role across the council. That's why we need member authority, which is why it's here before you today. But we also needed approval from our own in-house remuneration panel, which is representative of all our groups and our chair, as Graham has said, in terms of looking at the, assessing the job specification. The remuneration panel met on the fourteenth of February. Graham outlined his proposals. Louise Dougal from HR went through the scoring for the new role. We have a senior leadership team scoring matrix to put roles at various levels, which has previously been approved by council. And having been through that scoring matrix, the new proposed role, although it came out slightly lower than the two existing corporate director roles, still fell well within the SLT three scale with the other two corporate director roles. And it was unanimously agreed by the remuneration panel that the recommendation that's in front of you in three point two would be put in front of council. Just in terms of some of the funding elements as well, if I can just touch on those for a second. You'll see from Steve's CFO statement that there'd be unlikely to be any issues with budget in the next financial year for 2022-23, as we are carrying a number of vacancies in senior staff structure. And because of the nature of the recruitment process, there wouldn't be a full year cost involved for the new post. And then for future years from 2023-24 onwards, any implications of this restructure would then form part of those budget processes going forward. Just whilst I'm speaking, on a personal note, I do fully support the the creation of additional capacity at the senior level. I do think it's necessary to to drive forward Dambisher to face some of the future challenges which Graham outlined. Chair, as Graham obviously can't make a proposal at council, I would be intending proposing both recommendations at the appropriate time once we've had the debate. So I think that's probably all I needed to say at this point. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that, members. Before we go to questions, because I'm sure there will be questions, I'd like to invite councillor Hugh Evans, leader, please, to say a few words, so.
Excuse me. Thank you, Chairman, for the opportunity. When Graham was appointed as a chief exec, I asked him to reflect on the needs of the council, to share his ambition for the council and also the structure required to deliver that ambition. We are all by today familiar with the culture which our chief exec expects. He has shared the ambition that he has for the council. And today is the start of his discussion about the structure of the organisation. I have to say, this last 12 months on this council has been really tough, especially from April, when we had the interim arrangements in place and I worked very closely, nearly on a daily basis, with Nicola and Graham. And then when Graham was appointed in August, we had the discussions required to move the organisation forward. And as leader, it's a privilege to be able to work with the senior management in close quarters, to understand the challenges that they face and to try and move the authority forward. But I have to say, within those conversations, I did notice some real capacity pressures, some real issues in terms of how we move the authority forward and create a strategic discussion instead of an operational discussion at a high level. We have, I have to say, depended on the goodwill of many people in the organisation, particularly heads of service, to give us a strategic direction, even though they are responsible for their individual services. So it's been really difficult to create the corporate direction that's been required for the council. You simply cannot run a council on service plans. And it does need this type of high-level discussion. I've seen how the authority has been stretched, has been reacting to situations, not as proactive as it should be, and also not moving at the pace that we would expect. So you could say that this is a consequence of COVID, a part of it possibly is, but it's not the way that a well-run organisation should do. So from what I've seen, this is simply not sustainable in the long-term future, which is why I fully support the chief exec's intentions. So then it comes to the question of why now? Well, as Graham rightly says, he's been in post for six months and the timing, I know, is difficult for many of us just before our own election, but it's not about us, it's about the organisation. And it's strange in a way that the last decision required of us in full council will possibly be to sort of set the foundations for the next council. The risk is that if we do not make a decision today to support this, that there's a likelihood when you've elected cabinet leader, structures are in place, that we will not be able to appoint to this post until at the very earliest, early autumn, probably middle of autumn. So it'll be 18 months of hanging on in there, reacting to situations and not really being proactive. And I don't think that's fair on Graham or the individual to allow that to happen. So we're in a position, a privileged position, all of us, to lay the foundations for the next council to move the authority forward. Graham has highlighted the challenges. One of the big challenges I see is the regional work. We're going to be stretched away from our communities and one of the roles of this post would be to keep the regional conversation and the local conversation real within Dambisher. So thanks for the opportunity. I have seen firsthand, Chair, how difficult it's been in the last few months. And I would support Julian by seconding the recommendations.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Leader, for that. I've got one hand up at the moment, which is councillor Gwynn Ellis, so if you can, please come forward, Gwynn.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'm going to ask you to vote against this proposal today on the basis of one very important principle, in my opinion.
Can I just stop you for a minute? We've got a problem with the translation piece of machinery here, so the chief exec can't actually hear your comments at the moment, so just bear with us. And if you'd like to start again, that would be brilliant. Thanks very much.
Am I okay to start again now in Welsh or?
I'll call you in when we're ready. Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me on that one now? Is it okay? Check that one. Is that one okay? Can you hear me? It's okay. Can you hear me on that one? Great, thank you, Steph.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, councillor, for that. Thanks for being patient. Would you like to start your questions again, please? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, I'm going to ask you, fellow councillors, to vote against this proposal on the basis of one very important principle, in my opinion. The chief executive believes that we as a council should operate on the basis of principles, and I agree with that. But in this current financial environment, one of the most important principles that we as a council is that we should get value for money for every penny that we spend. I don't believe that this proposal allows us as councillors to ensure that. The report describes the current structure, but there's no analysis of the council's current performance and how the performance is expected to improve in the future. Such an analysis, what they call a gap analysis, would allow us as councillors to identify the disadvantages of the current structure and how the new structure would improve things. What advantages would be implemented? This report doesn't do that. Also, it doesn't give a detailed breakdown of the cost of the restructure. It talks about the salary of the new director, what about recruitment costs, training costs, pension costs? Will they need to have additional posts? Will there be a short-term capacity while we're waiting for the restructure to be put in place? I think we really need to know what the cost of this scheme would be. So we don't know the impact of the restructuring on the council's ability to serve the public. We don't know how much it'll cost. Obviously, nobody's done a cost-benefit analysis and as councillors, we've got no way of judging whether this scheme would be successful or not if implemented, because there are no targets for us to judge against. And this is surprising when you consider that one of the principles of the county council is to have clear performance expectations. Where are these clear performance expectations in this scheme? I'm a bit surprised that the cabinet has allowed this proposal to come into the council. No costs, no clear measurable benefits and no way of judging whether it's going to be successful. No clear performance expectations. I know it's very difficult to define the benefits of restructure, but it is difficult, not impossible. You can define how departments have performed without one director to see whether that performance has declined and then estimate how having a new director role would improve the performance of the department, but that hasn't been done. I'm not against restructure, per se. The chief executive makes a fair case that that should be done. But any plan to restructure should include a full analysis of the cost and of the benefits expected. That is the only way for us as councillors to be able to judge whether this plan offers good value for money. And I think that is the principle that should be the basis of everything that we do. Councillors, after voting in favour of increasing council house rent and the council tax, can you honestly, in all conscience, vote in favour of a very costly plan, expensive plan to restructure the directors without knowing the cost, without knowing the impact and without knowing how we measure if it's successful or not? Please vote against this. Thank you.
Councillor, I've got at the moment three other speakers, so I'll go to councillor Glenn Slindler, please.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to second everything that Gwynn Ellis has just said. It's, there is a cost of living crisis. That's not just a cost of living crisis for the people of Dambisher, but also for the county council as well. We are going to be burdened with an extra, well, perhaps £150,000 a year by creating just one post. So whilst the people of Dambisher struggle on a daily basis, I find this completely abhorrent at this time. The cost of council is more than the wage paid when national insurance and pensions are taken into account, et cetera. Can we afford this every single year? I propose that we gave a 0% council tax increase this year. That was voted down, that's council's choice, and we gave it, we raised it by 2.95%. And now we're going to spend a large chunk of that on employing a senior management role on at least £107,000 per year. I'm presently in a surgery, a cost-of-living-crisis surgery, being held in Dimby. And, you know, we have people coming in seeking advice from citizens, advice from Mind and from a local MS. And here we are choosing whether to give somebody £107,000. Can I suggest that we employ the vacant positions, we fill those vacant positions, find a way of retaining our senior leadership team, make that a priority, and let's move forward with what we have and see where we go in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, councillor John Butterfield, please.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, I'd like to say that this particular issue came to the Labour group, as it came to all political groups, I would imagine, to be debated within their groups. And I think that it is important that we support this action and that we vote for a corporate director to be appointed. We're, after all, only filling a vacant post, and we've seen in the past the problems quite clearly in the past by not filling the vacancies that have existed. We need to keep the senior leadership team as strong as possible. Moving into a new council, obviously, that is one of our priorities. And it will be challenging, and the challenges will be in most of the departments after this awful pandemic that we've all experienced. And I think this appointment will be the best way forward for this council, both locally, regionally, and to address the vacancies. We've all seen the past problems with not appointing to the vacancies that have existed in DCC over the last five years. We've seen some deterioration. We've kept services going, but I think that it is most important that we do fill this vacancy and we get on with it as soon as possible, because the challenges will be dramatic in the new council. Thank you, Chair.
Point of order, Chair.
Sorry?
Sorry, can I just clarify, please? Are we filling a vacant position or creating a new position just for John Butterfield's? Just so I can clear that up, please.
It's a new corporate director post.
Yeah, I can assist with that.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, in a way, it's both, isn't it? It's to create a new corporate director post, that's corporate director for our support services, a new post. And it's also to fill the vacancy at one of the other two corporate director posts. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Okay, thanks very much. Councillor Paul Pendleton, please.
Thank you, Chair. I won't go on. Gwyneth has put everything I would like to say, but she put it far more succinctly than I did. I agree entirely with Gwyneth and Glenn. This proposal has got a lot of words, but doesn't say very much. What's it going to cost? What are the benefits going to be? We don't know. On that basis, I cannot possibly vote for something like half a million or even more over the next few years. I was speaking to a woman the other day whose children wear two or three jumpers of an evening and they light the house with candles. What shall I say to them? We've just created a corporate director who's going to cost you half a million pounds or more over the next two or three years. Without a far, far, far more robust proposal, I cannot, in good conscience, vote for this today. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, councillor. Councillor Richard Maynor, please.
I, I hear everybody's point and I really can sympathise with those that are not managing on a day to day basis. And it's the lack of funds and the lack of resources that I think is, is driving this decision. And you're thinking, okay, well, that's counterintuitive. If, if you're worried about lack of resources and lack of ability to help the residents that vote for us and put in this position, why should we appoint a, a, a new corporate director? It's expensive. And yes, it's expensive. But for nine years previous to this settlement, we've had less and less resource to do more and more. We have a social funding crisis that is absolutely going to demand of the 48 councillors that sit in the chamber or on these screens next year to do something differently. So as lead member for strategic direction, when, when, when you're trying to be more intuitive, when you're trying to be more responsive, you're trying to be more relevant and you're trying to provide more and more help with less and less resource. Having that good, strong, clear leadership that takes the teams of heads of services in the direction that you need to, you, you really can't appoint a good, well motivated chief exec that has said that if he's got this wrong, he'll fall on his sword. You'll judge him in a couple of years' time. If he's got this wrong and he's wasting money, he'll be held accountable. So to have a good, strong, enthusiastic chief exec that wants to help more, that wants to do more and wants to provide strong leadership, to then take one of his hands and tie it behind his back, it, it just, it seems ridiculous. So i- if you've ever tried to lead on change, if you've ever tried to, to get some ideas that were slightly outside the box, if, if ever, and I don't think any of us ever have, like Graham Must, we've never had to take three and a half thousand people with us in a direction where we're reminding them that they're there to serve and it's really important. Oh, and by the way, can you slash a little bit more out of the budget and make it even more difficult for yourself? That kind of change takes lots of time. I, I, I won't be insulting and call it daydreaming time or nobody has that kind of luxury anymore. But to, to be able to have a top team that has clear focus, where you've got clear council leaders that are not day to day dealing with the kind of problems that our heads of service are dealing with, that the people that can communicate the messages clearly, get that across and then communicate to the wider resident base in, in Derbyshire, because there's nine and a hundred thousand people there. All of that leadership takes time. And at the minute, as, as the leader, as Julian has said, as Graham himself would say, well, we are really stretched. So trying to make any kind of change, we just don't have the luxury of the resource to be able to do that. So if we're gonna invest now in the role to have that clear direction, to have that clear strategy, to have that clear leadership, we must do this now. Because to not make a decision today that lets the chief executive do the job, we're going to slow the whole thing down by, it could easily be another year. Because by the time the next council forms itself and then there's a leader chosen and then the leader puts in place a cabinet and then we go away and we put in costings. Costings, by the way, that are, um, it's wrong to ask, because this is a, this is a first decision. And after this first decision, there are going to be ramifications through the senior, senior leadership team. And if we try and put a cost on who's on and who's in and who's out, that, that's not the way you do business. That is very dangerous ground. So to come along with firm costings, you really are setting yourself up for a massive HR nightmare and I'd rather not have that conversation any further. All I, all I can say today is we really must allow the chief exec to be able to lead in a way that you can fairly, fairly hold them accountable for the next, I'm hoping, two, three. I'm hoping he's in post for five or 10 years. But, you know, let's, let's give this a fighting chance. There's lots of change needed. There's lots of change that is necessary. This is the first decision in taking that journey that may well last right through the next council. Let's set it up well and make the next council as effective as it possibly can be from day one. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Barry Mallard, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I've got to agree with what Richard had just said there and with what Joan said earlier on. You know, over, over the, we've got a global crisis. We're in a global crisis and we've got to work out of that. We've never renewed Graham's post. We've also lost many, many in this five years, absolute first class officers. And the reason we've lost them is that they don't get paid enough. When you've got councils over the border, Liverpool, Manchester, Chester, it's quite easy now up to 55 for somebody to travel there and get a much better wage than what we're paying. If we want to make this council a sustainable council, then we've got to bite the bullet by the horns and we have to pay people the respectable wages that they, they need to do that position. If we want the top class people in, then we need to pay it. So you've got to speculate to accumulate and aim for the post. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Bob Murray, please.
Thank you, Chair. I just don't understand why people aren't understanding the, the thing that we're talking about today. The chief executive left, Graham took over the post and we are now being asked to fill his post. Where's the problem? I just don't understand it. We need it. So let's get on with it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much.
Point of order, please, Chairman.
Sorry?
Can I raise a point of order, please?
Please.
I, I, I think it's disgraceful that so many councillors don't, haven't read this document. They don't know what, what's being proposed. This is not a proposal to fill an empty position. It's a, it's a proposal to create a new position, to fill an empty position and create another position. Councillors, you really should read the documentation before you come to these meetings.
Here, here.
Councillor Bob Murray, you've still got your hand up.
I've taken it down, I think, Chair.
Okay, thanks very much.
Chair, can I just clarify what exactly the proposal is, just in case there is any lurking confusion? Clearly, filling a vacant post which is already in a structure requires no member approval at all. We wouldn't need to come here for that, for, for, for that to take place. The only reason that the paper is in front of you today is because the proposed structure that Graham has put forward in phase one would require creating an additional third corporate director post. And for the reasons that a number of members have, have given, that they've, you know, they feel that, and, and as I do, that the, the current structure does not allow the capacity, even if we fill the second vacant post that's already there, for CET members to be able to provide that strategic leadership. That, that they're spending too much time firefighting. They need that extra capacity. And we need that extra capacity as an authority to be able to deliver on, on all of the challenging agendas we've all spoken about. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for that. Paul, councillor Pendleton, you've got your hand up.
Thank you, Chair. I'm trying to choose my words carefully. So far, we've had two Labour members telling us they misunderstood completely what we're going to decide today. We've had a Conservative member telling us there's 930,000 people that live in Derbyshire and we don't understand what we're doing. We don't understand how to run a business because you choose your, your costings after you've started your business. There's a lot of utter nonsense being spoken so far and you're asking us to commit hundreds of thousands of pounds of public money to a new post. This meeting should be scrapped right now because nobody knows what they're talking about.
Thank you, councillor Pendleton, for that. Councillor Mark Young, please.
Hey, thank you, Chair. I'll try and get us back in track and take the emotion out of this, if I may. So some comments have been made and we're all here for the best for our residents, but I will ask the point. The affordability was mentioned, that there's no figures. And I'm guessing Julian, hopefully he's going to answer this, that I'm guessing that we can afford this, but that question's been raised, so I'll raise it if that's okay. Can we afford this? Is he similar structured to this, one for the chief exec in other authorities? Is he any success in this structure? And the remuneration panel, which met and is politically balanced, how did that vote? Does it have a vote? Are we allowed to know that? Because that is politically balanced. I'd be interested on those three points, please.
Thank you very much. Before I bring anybody else, any of the senior officers in, i.e. Graham, to answer back, councillor Butterfield, please.
Thank you, Chair. I have the document in front of me here and I can certainly read as well, I assume, as everyone else. And I thank Paul, councillor Pendleton, for, uh, the comments that he made of, now, I'm looking at the paper and it's the reshaping of the council and the new vision for the future of restructuring the senior leadership team and our challenges to face the future. And that is exactly what I'm doing and that is exactly what I, I would have seconded if it was moved, that this appointment is made. Thank you, Paul, for pointing out that I didn't have the document and didn't know what we were talking about. Of course, it was debated fully i- in, in, in the Labour Group. And I assume it was debated fully in the Plaid Group, as it would have been in all the political groups in Derbyshire County Council. But I can reassure, I can assure you all, I have the document in front of me. I am able to read and I do understand exactly that it's the new vision for the future to restructure the senior leadership team. And, and I'm in full agreement to add a new corporate director to, which would mean that we would have three corporate directors. Thank you so much, Chair.
Good, councillor Butterfield, I'll bring in chief executive, please.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Yeah, um, as I said at, at my intro, it was quite an extensive set of papers there. And of course, I do trust that members do read the papers, which is why I prepared them. What I would say is it is difficult times and no one's saying that it isn't difficult times. And there are more difficult times ahead. And it is for that reason, it's, it's more appropriate in difficult times that you invest in the senior management and leadership to ensure that we are fit to be able to give the right direction and to make the right decisions. Now, those decisions are about, in the end, supporting frontline services and supporting the services that we provide to the community. It's too easy an argument to say, well, why don't, we, we could get rid of the chief exec. We could get rid of the two existing corporate directors. Because they're, they're obviously, they're, they're paid a lot of money. What are they doing? Why don't we invest that money in frontline services? It's because you need strong management and strong leadership during difficult times that I am proposing that we invest in additional corporate director. Now, it's pretty clear to me in the report and in the many appendices in the report, it is clear around what that cost is and that cost has been supported by the remuneration panel. The section 151 officer statement at paragraph 9.1, and I know members will have read it, but I'm just going to read a small part out for them. As the chief financial officer, I am fully supportive of the rationale behind the restructure, recognising the need for investment in this level at the council. So that's your 151 officer. We can afford it. And he is understanding and is supportive of the rationale behind that level of investment. If members were to turn to paragraph six, which I'm sure they have read, they will see that the whole of SLT support the principle. The whole of the senior leadership team of this council support the proposal. Why it is a proposal I have put forward, I have consulted with the senior leadership team and they all support the need for the additional corporate director and they all support the need for the additional capacity in the senior leadership team. At appendix five, I clearly lay out what the benefits are. Now, I could have gone into detail around the financial figures in that and I would have, I would have been criticised for making guesses and assessments around what the benefits will be in terms of pounds, saling and pence. What I'm laying out in appendix five is a very clear summary of the benefits that this additional post will bring. I think that's fairly clear. This is a council with a, with a £220 million budget per year, with 4,000, over 4,000 staff employed by it. I don't think the current 13 senior, 13 people in the senior leadership team is enough. And I don't think the structure is right in order to make us as efficient as we can be. And I go back to that point of efficiency. And I did say in the, in the intro to the report, this is an invest to save. This additional post will make the council more effective in its decision making and will bring efficiencies, will make us a more efficient council. And if you want to know the how, I suggest you go back to appendix five because that clearly lays out the how. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Graham. Councillor Julian Thompson-Hill and then I've got councillor Brian Jones. So Julian, please.
Yeah, thank, thank you very much, Chair, for letting me come back in. I was, I was, I asked a couple of questions by, by Mark, which I just wanted to, to get back to with regards to the funding element. I mean, clearly, the, the grade of the post is included within section 4.7 to the, to your paper on page six. There would obviously be the usual on costs that you would need to, to put on in terms of pension and, and national insurance and all the rest of it that you would need to, 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 to include on that. That is the same as any other post in the authority. I would also like to take you to the other part of section 9.1, which is Steve's part. I did highlight this when I spoke at the beginning, but I'll, I'll re-highlight it, that in the next financial year, there would be unlikely to be any impact on our budgets, simply because we are carrying quite a high number of senior staff vacancies already in the structure. Even if we approve it today, the recruitment process and, and potential notice periods would mean that it certainly wouldn't be a full year cost in the first year. In terms of the overall structure, because of course, we're only talking about phase one of Graham's proposals today, phase two, the proposals are the wider SLT posts. And the reason that you can't give direct costings at this point is because we don't know whether the two posts at corporate director level, whether they will be filled internally, externally or a combination of the two. And therefore, what the issues will be when we, when Graham looks at the, the phase two part of that. So that is why, you know, you can't give a hard and fast figure at this point. And in terms of Mark's other question that he asked about the remuneration panel, clearly, the remuneration panel's decision related round the second recommendation about the, the grading of the post. There was one member who didn't attend, otherwise it was unanimous. Although in the, in the general discussions around that, I think most of the members were supportive of the overall principle as well. And I don't want to be putting any words in anyone else's minds because I'm sure they'll, they'll, they'll quote me if I'm, if I'm wrong on that. So hopefully that answers the questions on both the finances and the remuneration panel. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, there was one other one about the, to Graham, about similar structures in other authorities, which there were some concerns raised by members about whether this will work. So I think it's always good to test and I've asked this question myself. So if Graham could just come in, is there any similar structures to the one proposed, please?
Yeah, well, Graham will come back now.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, councillor Young. Yeah, I forgot to, uh, cover that point, yeah. Each authority looks at their management structures differently. I've done a bit of research across North Wales and, and, and beyond in terms of other authorities in South Wales. Certainly, what's being proposed is a very close reflection of the current management arrangements in Conway County Council, who have three corporate directors and heads of service below. It's also very similar to the current structure in Gwynedd. And Vale Glamorgan have currently introduced a new corporate director for support services, almost identical to what is being proposed here. So there are a number of councils that are not like this one, like the proposal. And, but there are a number that are very similar to what is being proposed. Each authority does it slightly differently. And I've made the assessment around what is appropriate for Derbyshire County Council. Thank you, Mark.
No, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, councillor Brian Jones. And afterwards, I've got councillor Rhys Thomas. And then we're going to, we're going to go to the vote, I think we've had.
Well, I've got, I've got just going in before the vote, where we go then. Julian's explained some of the, some of the answers there, the questions that came about, some of the detail. And of course, in every case, when you, whatever change you make, you make a change in whatever, whatever it might be. But this is a high level change that's been proposed here. And you never know, we could have had a raft of information, details on costings, right down to the last pound, shillings and pence. But you will never know until you actually put it into practice, has it worked or hasn't it worked? So that will be something down the line, if it's approved this afternoon, that you left away and see and realize, was it the right thing to do? But we voted this chief executive in six months ago, eight months ago, however long it was now. You gave him the confidence then to take on the role, which he subsequently done. And hopefully, you noticed a few minutes ago, and it has uplifted me. It was great to see a bit of fire there when he came back a few moments ago. There was definitely belief, I could feel it over this virtual meeting, that he believes in what he's putting forward is going to work. And so members voted him into the position. You've got to give him the backing. And only time will tell if it, if it's correct, what he's proposing and if it will work. I do believe in it. We've had a lot of differences, Graham and myself, over five years. But I'll back him on this. And I believe it's the right thing to do. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor for that. Councillor Rhys Thomas, and then councillor Glen Swindler, and then we're going to go to the vote, okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair. The Plaid Cymru group consists of a number of very free-thinking people, and I admire that. There is no, there is no party or group whip on this. People who know me on the council, and I've been on the council for five years now, now know that I take policy matters very, very seriously. And I read all the documents and I try to drive our policies forward. This matter, even though I realize why it's coming before us, because a post on this, of this salary and of this importance has to come before full council, I realize why. But it's, it's to me almost an operational matter. And once we have appointed a chief executive, I don't want to be the one that prevents him from reorganizing the team as he is fit. Now, I've made the comment many times that I don't think that in this pre-election period was a brilliant time to be bringing this forward. But I have sat on the senior remuneration panel and I've been very happy for this to come forward to a decision by full council today. And I know how I'll be voting. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, councillor, thank you councillor Rhys Thomas. Gave it the kiss of death, didn't I here, when I said I was going to go to the vote? But I've got councillor Glen Swindler and then councillor Martin Holland. And then this H R wants to come in at the end, so.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, point of order, Mr. Chair. Point of order. Graham Timms, point of order.
Come on, Graham.
Is it in order for Glen Swindler to speak for a third time? He had his say and then he came back and now he's wanting to come back again. I just wonder if it's in order for a councillor to speak three times? I thought the tradition was for people to vote one, to speak once.
Thank you for that. I think my, the criticism of me is I'm a very generous chair. And I try and give everybody a bit of a, a bit of a good, a good going, really. And it has been a good discussion, a good, just. So unless anybody's got any, any other objection, I'm quite happy for Glen Swindler to, to, to say his piece. It's gone quiet, so I assume that you're quite happy for councillor Swindler to come in at the end. And then I'll bring H R in as well. So councillor Martin Holland, but thanks very much, councillor Timms, for that. It's very much appreciated. Councillor Martin Holland, please.
Thank you, Chair. I will be brief. Actually, it's strange for Rhys and I to actually agree on, on things. But I must admit, I tend to agree with Rhys's comments. I was going to come back and say that, you know, this is all about strengthening the council's position at the moment in these difficult times. And yes, I like Rhys, I think it is an operational issue. We've appointed a chief executive. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that as he goes through the structure, that we may find positions that are not currently vacant, that we don't need to fill. I will say that openly. But I think we've got to give the chief executive a chance to prove himself in this issue. If in 12 months' time we find that it's failed, then of course, you know, Graham will have something to answer then. But also, you know, we are in difficult times. I dread switching on the news every morning at the moment. And the impact of what's going on in the Ukraine will surely filter through to us all in the long term. And I think we have to have a strong team to prepare ourselves for the challenges that we're going to face in the next couple of years. So I do support this. But I'm obviously keen to see, you know, the next phases and whether or not we can actually look at reducing some of our overheads there along the way. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor for that. Councillor Glen Swindler, before you come in, just quickly, make it brief, please. You've had a couple of really good goes.
Yeah, will do.
Also got councillor Merrick Lloyd Davis, so, and that is it. And I'm going straight to H R and that will be the end. So please, nobody.
My hand's been up for about 10 minutes.
Okay, I haven't seen that one, but. Oh, H R, yes. Yeah, we're going to go to H R at the end, okay, thanks. Okay, so Glen Swindler and then Merrick Lloyd Davis, please afterwards.
Okay, thank you again. In a few weeks, many of you are going to go be seeking reelection. When you knock on the doors and someone asks what have council done to help out with this present crisis, I hope you don't have to say, we increased your council tax this year and employed another corporate director. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks very much for that. Councillor Merrick Lloyd Davis.
Dear Chair. Mister Cadare. Thank you, Mister Chairman, for the opportunity. And thank you for the discussion. We need a high level post. But no one has said how many directors we had back in 96. I think we reduced the number of directors, if I remember rightly, and then we've reduced them again later. The story that I use about this was, if you had a steam engine, you've got a driver, which is the chief executive. You've got the one who fires it up, who helps to drive the train. And the third person is the one who gathers in the tickets and looks after the train itself as it's going along its journey. Think about that. If you do away with one of those, and maybe we have seen that, and that is the problem, then the driver is trying to drive and he's going to get lost or he won't be able to see what's in front of the train. I know that we're in a difficult financial situation, but there are vacant posts. And I don't know whether anybody's informed us yet, whether there are any vacant posts amongst the director level, whether there were four or five before, or have we done away with those posts? But I'm now hoping to put one director post back in. Thank you.
Councillor Hugh Hilditch Roberts. Sorry, I interpreted your initials as H R, sorry about that, so, thank you.
That's okay, thank you, Chair. Just, just quickly, as somebody who was on the recruitment panel and the process of the chief exec, I'm surprised that some of the speakers, they didn't apply for the job because they seem to be in a position of having the operational knowledge of running a council. For me, yes, the headline is, there's a hundred grand job being created. But the debate needs to be around is what efficiencies and how this council will improve going forward. And let me give you a scenario, which is how I look at it, because I actually did challenge Graham on this when I first saw the paper. And I looked at it like this, we need somebody who saw the corporate crap out and strategic thinking and let Tony Ward fill pot holes. That's where I'm coming from, that's what we need, is getting these people on the ground, on the job, doing the best for our residents. So, you know, we, we as a council, back Graham. If this is a mistake and an own goal, he'll pay for it in his review annually. That's why we've got to do this, we are councillors, we are not operational managers.
Thank you, councillor. Right, I don't want anybody else to put their hands up now, after the two speakers that have left. We've got councillor Brian Jones and then councillor Gwyneth Ellis, and that's it, we're going to go straight to.
Mister Chairman, can I respectfully ask if I can have a response to my question? I would be grateful to receive an answer, thank you.
Councillor, yeah, the, I mean, in the past, the council have had any number of directors. In fairly recent times, we had as many, it was up to four. We've had more in the past, if you went way back. But I think in fairly recent times, we had up to four directors. In more recent, more recent times, it's been down to two corporate directors. One of those two is vacant, it's the position that I vacated when I became chief executive. And the proposal here today is to go back to three corporate directors. So in effect, I think we'd cleared that up earlier on. So yeah, there's been four, five, six directors in the past. We've gone down to two and propose, and we go back up to three. One is a brand new post that we would need to fill and one is a vacancy created by my promotion to chief executive. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Jones, if you put your hand down, so I.
I dropped my hand, yeah, yeah, dropped my hand now, yeah, thank you.
Councillor Gwyneth Ellis, and then we're going to the vote, please.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to come back because I didn't feel that anybody responded to the comments that I made. A number of the ones who have spoken have said that Graham will be accountable for this in the years when we can see whether it's been successful or not. But I think that was my basic point from the document we have in front of us. We can't tell whether this will be successful. The only measure of success is that the post is created and filled. There is no other measure which we can use to gauge whether it's been successful or not. So I urge you, before the vote, please make sure that you accept that you know what the costs, that you know what the benefits are. And that you know how to measure success. If you think you can do that, then you can justify voting in favor of this. Thank you.
I'm, I mean, my, my view is, do you want, first of all, Julian, do you want to read out the proposals and then we'll go to the vote, please?
I think that, I think that might be just as well, so that nobody can be in any doubt. So the recommendation 3.1 is the council approves the creation of a new corporate director post with the proposed title of Corporate Director for Support Services. And 3.2, that council accept the recommendation of the member S L T remuneration panel, that the new post of Corporate Director for Support Services at the S L T three level. So I'd move those two recommendations, Chair.
Thank you very much. We've had a proposal and a second for that, and we've also had a. I go through the sheet and call people's councillors' names out. And you can vote for, for these proposals or against or abstain. So is everybody happy with, with, with that?
Happy.
Happy.
Okay. So I'll call out the names, so if you can just, say, just indicate how you're going to vote. Councillor Brian Blakely, please.
Four.
Joan Butterfield.
Four.
Jeanette Chamberlain-Jones.
I think Jeanette has left the meeting, Chair, but did indicate that she was in favor of this.
We can't, we can't use that. She's not here. Councillor Ellie Chard, please.
Four.
Councillor Anne Davis.
Four.
Gareth Davies. Okay. Councillor Merrick Lloyd Davis.
Four, Plaid.
Four.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Gwyneth Ellis.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Hugh Evans. Councillor Peter Evans. No, not here, okay. Councillor Bobby Feeley.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Tony Flynn.
Four.
Councillor Tony Flynn. No, not here, okay. Councillor Rachel Flynn. Councillor Hugh Hilditch Roberts.
Plaid.
Thank you. Councillor Martin Holland.
Four.
Councillor Alan Hughes.
Against.
Against, thank you.
Plaid, against.
Councillor Hugh Irvin, please.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Alan James, four. Councillor Brian Jones.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Tina Jones.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Pat Jones. Not here, okay, thank you for that. Councillor Gwyneth, councillor.
Gwyneth Matso.
Stained.
So, Matso.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
So abstained because I had to leave the meeting.
Councillor Ganai Lloyd Williams.
Against.
Okay. Councillor Richard Maynard.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Christine Marston.
Four.
Councillor Barry Meller.
Four.
Councillor Melvin Mile.
Four.
Councillor Bob Murray.
Four.
Councillor Mervyn Parry.
Not here.
Thank you. Councillor Paul Pendleton.
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Peter Prandagast. Not here, okay. Councillor Orwell Roberts.
Four, Plaid.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Anton Simpson.
Four.
Councillor Peter Scott's absent. Councillor Glen Swindler.
Against.
Councillor Tony Thomas.
Four.
Councillor Andrew Thomas. Not here. Councillor Rhys Thomas.
Four, Plaid.
Four.
Councillor Julian Thompson-Hill.
Four.
Councillor Graham Timms.
Four.
Councillor Joe Welch. Not here, okay. Councillor Cheryl Williams.
Four.
Okay. Councillor David G. Williams. Not here, thank you. Councillor Errol Williams. No, not here. Councillor Hugh Williams.
Four, Chair.
Councillor Emerys Wynn.
Against.
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 Councillor Mark Young.
For.
Have we missed any? Yes, sorry.
Am I able to vote? Because I had to just do the school run, I'm afraid, Chair.
Say that again.
I had to do the school run, Chair, but I am back in time. Am I able to vote?
If you've missed some, if you've missed part of the debate, you're not entitled to vote. You need to be here for the entirety.
No.
Okay.
Right.
Thanks. Okay, so we've got the, the results here. We've got 27 for, we've got six against, and we've got one abstain. So that's carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for that debate. So shall we have five minutes or so, and then we'll go on to the briefing? And that will be a.